Monday, June 3rd. Commissioner's motion to adjourn before meeting in session. Is he able to do this?
Our Lord in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Is there anyone in the courtroom which can make public comments? If there are none, we'll go on. Title II. Jan Harrell, Wilson County, Texas. Discuss, take action, and notice. Before we do that correction, I expect a special meeting on the record. Discuss, take action, and notice of bond redemption. Jan Harrell, Wilson County, Texas. Notice of bond redemption. Notice hereby given, Wilson County, Texas pursuant to the order due to pass and adopted by the Board of Directors, calls for the redemption of those outstanding bonds of the county described as follows. Wilson County, Texas. Two million, five hundred sixty-five thousand, binned and refunded bond series two thousand three. Aggregated three hundred thousand dollars in principal amount outstanding. Each of the denominations of five thousand dollars are an integral multiple thereof and originally scheduled to mature on February 2014. The redeemed series two thousand three bonds. The first day of July 2013, the date fixed for redemption of the redemption series two thousand three bonds as prescribed in the aforementioned order. You are hereby notified that such bonds should be presented for redemption to U.S. Bank National Association in Houston, Texas on or immediately before the redemption date described above. That the interest of such bonds shall cease to occur from and after the redemption date. And on the redemption date, the bonds identified above will become due and payable at the redemption price of par and accrue of interest of the redemption date. This notice is issued and given pursuant to the option of redemption reserved by the county in the proceeding authorized in the issuance of said redeemed series two thousand three bonds and in accordance with the recitals and provisions of each said bond. Witness official signature this third day, June 2013. Motion. Commissioner's comment second. Commissioner file all of them. All right. Item three is budget workshop.
Y'all should, and each of y'all should have a package that I agreed with you personally to prepare for me. You don't get one? The top one is just a recap of all the requests from each of the department heads that actually gave us a request. There were several that we did not give any requests from, but we did give several. So, kind of like when my sister and I were teenagers, my mother used to call us I need it and I want it. It's up to y'all to figure out who's I need and who's I want. Anyway, I think some of the things that we're going to need to talk about before we even really get into the requests or some other items. We've been talking about having this fiber run from the annex three to the courthouse because apparently this office, this whole complex is having a lot of problems with their internet and telephones and all of that. Dawn and I, Dawn's not here, have met with HTS about doing that. It came in fairly reasonably priced, which drives the heck out of me. But we're not sure that we can actually do it yet because we do still have a couple of other places that we have to talk to. Apparently there's, TechStop has a rule about running parallel to their roads, which of course this is a TechStop road. So we have to get clearance from them on it. But the other thing, that is going to cost us two dollars that we would like to be able to actually do on this budget here. The other thing is actually running the fiber to the sheriff's office so that we all have this connection. So that, I don't really have numbers on, but I'm assuming we talked to a couple of people in the public looking at thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars to do that, run that. And I think that, one of the things that I think is important is to be able to access and be able to bring everybody on board as far as if we ever get to the point where we work online and take them online. So that's one thing that is not actually in here. The other thing that's not in here is we've also been conversing a bit about having an IT department, which in order to do that, we'll have to set up a new department and budget for that as well. I have a few preliminary numbers as far as salaries and things like that. But it's one of those things we're really not going to know until we get into it as far as what type of equipment that department's going to need. I'm probably thinking between salary and a little bit of equipment for them. We're probably looking easily at a hundred thousand, hundred fifty. I mean, just when you start looking at, we have to cover FICA, we have to cover retirement, we have to cover insurance. If you have two employees in that department, that starts to add up real quick. So we're probably looking at at least a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand that we may have to budget if we pursue that wish I think we really need to do. The good thing about it is, once we get an IT department set up and running and they learn where everything is, we will probably be able to use our current IT providers as much. And that will probably recoup most of that money by not using them.
Are we under a contract with HTS, right?
Yes, we are. That contract runs about seventy thousand just for the maintenance and repair of our current equipment. And then they bill us for things that aren't covered and for, like, everything. But, so I'm thinking, once we can get out, come under that contract. Now, that contract runs from January to January, so.
Is it renewed annually?
Yes. But we will need them for a time being until the new IT people, you know, figure out where everything is. And because the problem that I have with them is I don't know where half that stuff is and I don't know how, you know, half of our passwords or any of that type of thing.
How much do we budget about HTS for you?
Um, it's probably about a hundred.
A hundred dollars?
So we're not looking at a whole lot of new money in the end?
No, no.
On the short term, it might be.
On the short term, yes, because we'll have to keep HTS on board.
HTS and another one.
Well, one of the, one of the things is that while we have a number of people that are proficient with internet and everything, we don't have anyone that's expert in knowing what we, when we're being taken or when we're not by each other agencies. And in fact, it very easily paper anything there is just having a knowledgeable person to do that work.
I think the county judge is responsible for knowing all this.
That's, yeah, we're where we are.
It is the responsibility to know somebody that doesn't know.
Burna, on that, go back on the fiber. Is that thirty-five thousand? Is that for this and running to the sheriff's office?
No, no. This, right now what we're looking at is about fifteen to seventeen thousand to run from the courthouse to annex three. We haven't gotten numbers yet from HTS or anybody else. Those numbers are actually from HTS for that. But we were kind of guessing, talking to people that know about where the fibers run and all that other stuff. And if we can coordinate with the school, because basically what we're looking at is using the school's fiber, run into the sheriff's office, and then going to the alternative school because they don't have fiber in there yet. So forget our building and your building, yes. Which is another issue I always have, your building. So we are just guessing at thirty-five to fifty thousand on that. But that's just something that, you know, those are some of the things that we're going to have to consider, you know, a new IT department, the fiber optics. The other thing is that I know the district clerk is going to be going online effective January 1st, I believe, for a lot of their filings and everything. And I don't know about the county clerk. I'm assuming if the district is doing it, so is the county. It's in my presentation, which will be, you know, we're going to have to be sure we have the one equipment to be able to do that and internet connection to be able to do that. So other than the normal I need and I want, those are a few of the things that. So anyway, well, which one to start with first, salaries?
Whatever.
Well, how about let's just kind of walk through the requests first and give us some.
For people that haven't made the request, such as me, then I would make my request to four commissioners, while the state, did everybody already do theirs? In Trinity?
Sure. Do you want to go ahead and do yours first?
No, no, we can, I can go last. I can go last.
After everybody's like, oh, and then you're.
Yeah, and then I'll do mine last. Because I'm not going anywhere.
You're not going anywhere. Anyway, the little spreadsheet you have in front of you is kind of a recap of all the requests that we've received. And then behind it are the actual requests. Again, we talked about, you know, the county judge didn't give us the request, so he's fine. The district clerk, she's basically talking about just an increase in equipment and increase in conferences. And I can see why with all this new stuff coming down the pipe, she's probably going to need that. We have requests from the JPs. The JPs and I met last week, Monday, and talked a little bit about the JP Tech Fund. That's basically where they're getting most of their equipment from and their internet service. We have the JP's internet service and the JP's data cards. They have the laptops and they have to have little data cards to go with that. That usually runs each one of them about sixty-five, seventy-nine percent one, okay? We have, I believe, one JP that's going to need some additional equipment. So we kind of talked about that and our guess on that was for the internet service, I believe it was, I think it was four thousand for the internet commission for all of the JPs. And we had budgeted last year about six thousand dollars in equipment. So the JP fund basically though funds itself, the JP Tech Fund basically funds itself. So we were looking at budgeting about ten thousand from the JP Tech Fund for the internet and the equipment, and their income is usually about ten. So that's pretty much a breaking.
When you say it's funded by itself.
They have fees. All courts have fees. That are specifically for the JP Tech Fund and those fees run.
Does that say the state basically, then they take this amount to go to this fund or that fund? It's really a matter of course, who keep it for.
Yeah, Jan has the one that has to deal with that. She gets a list this long of every time somebody has a hundred dollar fine. Now it's fifteen different places it goes. So, and the JP Tech Fund is one of those. And it's mandated that it's supposed to be used only for certain things, computer equipment and things like that. So that is on there. I'm not sure, did they actually put that separately over here?
Yes.
Yes, it's on there. It's on about page four, the JP Tech Fund. And then the Justice of the Peace, we have requests from one, two, and four.
You didn't get one from three?
I guess not.
I've got it. I thought that four we didn't pick.
Maybe not.
He don't do anything.
That's really basically what he said, he wanted whatever phrase for his employee that.
That's the same.
Could be a sharp request, right?
He didn't, he didn't ask anything on that the other day, other than, of course he wanted.
I was going to get with you on mine later, but I've got something I wanted that I added that I really didn't need.
Well, that's a good thing.
Well, it ain't the whole thing. I just changed it from something else is what it's going to be.
All right, I know you were going to decrease.
Can y'all explain what y'all's contract labor?
That's what I was just talking about. Can I?
Sure.
Y'all mind? Just, just on mine on the contract labor, because I do use contract, I've had, just started using contract labor and it's been paid for out of my part-time fund, which I don't have part-time help. And all I do is get rid of the part-time.
Line item.
Line item and put it on contract labor for me. That's all I was, that's what I was thinking about, or talking about just then.
So it wouldn't be an actual. Is that secretarial assistance? What is that?
What's that?
Is that secretarial assistance?
Burna, doesn't that have to be run through payroll? We don't need anybody contract labor anymore. Everything has to go through payroll. That's what I was told.
Have they considered part-time help, not contract help?
The ones that like come work for Dawn and for you and for JP two, we get time sheets for them. It's not considered contract labor.
Well, then I don't need any contract labor and leave it on part-time help. I was under the impression that that was contract help. But I asked you, go ahead, Bill, to come out.
And that was a confusion that I had as well. I have one clerk and whenever she has to go to training, I either close the office or we have to hire someone to come in for her. And on our budget, we have salaries and we have part-time salary. And there's certain rules and regulations as far as taxes and so forth that go to being a part-time employee versus being a contract employee. And I also have no one to clean my office. And I'm staying late a lot of times and Nancy and I are, you know, we're running both. So we've been hiring someone to come and clean our office at least twice a month because it just gets rid of.
That would be contract labor.
That would be contract labor versus clerical.
The difference there is if they are, if they do that on their own, you know, like cleaners and.
They don't fill out an application through the county. Whereas Denise Nguyen, who is usually my substitute clerk, she has gone to the county and she has filled out an application. And I don't know all the intricacies of taking money out for FICA and all of those things.
If you're a part-time secretary, you have to go through payroll.
Unless that's a, unless that's a job that they actually have per se. You know, you have people that are hired out as temps, okay? Then you can call that contract labor. But if they're actually just, you know, doing a sideline, being employed.
Temporary agency is what you're saying.
So do we need to have both the part-time and the contract? I don't know, I don't know who cleans for Dent's office, but I don't know. Do we need both categories or we need only one category? I don't know.
Well, I think cleaning would be a separate category.
So would that go under contract or would that be under a line item on the budget for cleave? I have no idea.
I would think you would put it under contract because if you have like, like we have, who is it that has the guy that mows? Is that your dad all the time? Who has somebody that mows their grass? He puts that under contract labor. He does that as a sideline job, so I mean, he's not an employee, he's a contractor.
That's a good clarification.
Okay, so regardless of where it goes, we're going to, you know, budget for temporary help. The problem with that is we do have to consider that we are going to have to pay part of the FICA for these folks.
Sure.
Luckily not retirement or insurance.
But they also need to keep in mind, Burna, if their secretaries are going to be gone a whole week and they have to hire somebody for a whole week, they have to keep that person under twenty-nine hours for that week. They have to have under thirty. They can only work twenty-nine hours and can't work for forty.
But there is a statute on that that I was reading about the part-timers. When it's called temporary part-time, you can work them over thirty hours, but it's just going to be for a certain time period, like for a month or two months.
Like with Eva's help.
There's, there's, man, I got like three hundred and fifty pages.
Well, I called the lady who put on that workshop that I gave on paperwork for last week and I asked about Eva's employees and she said, you can do it, you know, you can try it, you can actually do it with that. But if they happen to go to the exchange to, later on, to get health insurance, then you're going to be fined three thousand dollars. She said, you can take the chance, but then if, for instance, they want to, they want to go to the exchange to get health insurance because, you know, everything's going to be changing from now to forty, then you will take the chance of being fined three thousand dollars.
And I think that maybe you can read all. Not the three hundred and fifty pages, but there's some summary about the part-time.
Yeah, there's got to be something.
There's something there, but you just got to read it over and over.
Because if you have seasonal employees and there are a lot of.
I did ask her about the seasonal employees and she said, yes, because they're defined and so will Eva's be defined, where they come in for so many days and they leave.
They'd be great.
But if you have somebody that doesn't have, like, that has, like in other words, they're going to come in and they're going to work for maybe a year or two or one, you know, all the time, then they can, they're going to be considered part-time and not paid.
Well, that's, that's a lot of difference than like, like with Eva's summer help that comes from school. That's a tremendous amount of difference in that.
Yes, there's a difference in that. That's a seasonal, just like the tax people, just like the election. They're seasonal. They start from this date and end at this date.
As needed. And I would think that the employees that you would have, like Dawn's replacement or whatever she's at or something, would be the same thing. And so.
We're just going to have a clarification of that.
Three hundred and fifty pages, but you don't have to read it all. But there's a summary for that part-time position.
They teach us how to skim the most.
Albert, can you, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Just come off the top. You didn't read all three hundred pages?
I was going to make copies, but my copy, it's just too much. But it is there, I mean, it is, there's a lot of things that you have to read over there.
They haven't started having workshops on that yet, so whenever they start having workshops, then, you know.
But it does take a fair amount of two thousand for it.
I'd like to contact, I'd like to read it as soon as I get to the Obama case.
It comes from the.
Did you tell me you're Obama here?
It's called affordable care.
Affordable care.
That's what it's called. Yeah, the affordable care.
Yes. Affordable for everybody but lawyers.
Lawyers.
Yeah, yeah. Covers everybody except for the. So I have a feeling that there's going to be a loss clarification.
Oh, yeah.
There's just too many things that.
Well, and it goes back to how you define your help.
How you define it.
Are you defining them as part-time or are they seasonal or are they contract? So I have a question. Do we as JPs who hire that type of individual, do we need to designate them into one of those categories? Do we need to go to the training to figure out how we're going to designate these individuals?
Well, I'll be going to trainings on it because I do the payroll and stuff, so.
So you'll just tell.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll, I'll go and learn about it and bring back my stuff.
Thank you.
So the JPs, Justice of the Peace one basically is asking for increases in pay for his employees, part-time and full-time. JP two, she's here, if y'all have any questions. She has the normal things. And then there's some other things, it's truancy, which is something new, that.
Could you explain that, please?
I added the new line item this year and I asked for a thousand dollars. The reason is that I do three-fourths of all the truancy cases in the county. I do, Coates, Stockdale, Florisville, including the alternative school. And alternative schools sometimes brings me cases from Nixon, East Central, out-of-county things. And I'm somewhat inundated with lots of paperwork. And I've had to purchase new folders. I want, I purchased several things this year that I didn't anticipate having to purchase just because we want to keep it more organized. I'm doing follow-up visits with the students. We're finding that they are paying their fines, if they can't pay their fines, they're coming back or doing the assignments. And we're having a much lower recidivism rate than we've ever had in the past. And so we've been real successful with the students. But it is costing money to do that. However, because the students and parents are paying their fines better now than ever before, we have more, we're taking in more money. And if I impose, say, a five hundred dollar fine and that fine is paid, two hundred and fifty dollars of that fine goes to the public school from which the case was initiated and two hundred and fifty goes to the general fund, okay? And also, we want, I want to do more with the students. And one of the things I just purchased was two hundred and fifty U.S. constitutions, little pocket versions. Because when students come back, I give each one of them a pocket constitution and an assignment to memorize the Bill of Rights. Just basic things that I think is going to help them in school, help them in life in the long run. I look at truancy not just as something that's right now a bad thing, but I see it as an opportunity to increase their knowledge and an opportunity to serve them and have them be motivated to serve their community better. So I see it probably a little bit different than some people do. But it is costing. I think it costs how much, a hundred dollars?
Does other counties pay in to that or not, or just?
They pay to the school system, okay? And so if the alternative campus, which is where those other counties come from, if those kids come from those counties, they're fine. Half of it goes to the alternative school and half goes to the county because the alternative school is the one that initiated the claim. And it is a classy misdemeanor. A lot of people are shocked to know that.
So truancy is going through the alternative school? If not directly from, some of it?
Right, some of it. If a student from Nixon is assigned to the alternative school for, say, sixty days and they approve ten absences within that sixty-day period, then the alternative school can file a claim under chapter forty-five of the Texas Family Code. And then those, that parent and that student who are claimed, filed, the file is claimed against, the claim is filed against, winds up.
So what percent of your cases come from alternative?
Probably, I'm going to say about fifteen percent. I haven't run the numbers exactly, but about fifteen percent. And I've had only three cases from out-of-county and I've had about a hundred and twenty cases this year. So it's a real small amount, but they do exist.
Just about how many cases you have a year?
A hundred and twenty. I had a hundred and twenty this past year. We're hoping that number will go down, but.
And then we have, um, the increase in the conferences. I think almost everyone has requested an increase in conference expenses on the JP's part. I don't see one under one and of course, Mr. Verdett can give us one, but I would imagine that that's just a, across the board. I've been in all the JP's, we'll probably need an increase in conferences.
It's because of the new rules?
What, um, on the JP four, that increase in maintenance, uh, what is that maintenance for?
Well, I've already deleted my maintenance for this year, so I wanted to be sure. I mean, I'm not sure what all this coming out of the maintenance, so.
Computer, does it have that equipment maintenance?
I guess it's what, it's what was maintenance, that's what I'm taking. And, uh, granted, and I'm already, like I said, this year I'm already out, so I wanted to be sure I'm not running up for next year.
The maintenance for the software and everything?
The equipment maintenance.
The equipment?
Because they don't have any.
Because they put us like our copiers, printers.
Oh, okay.
Which, again, goes back to HTS because they're, they're the ones that actually come in and maintain everything. And if it's not specifically on that contract, they're gonna charge us for labor and if they, you know, new equipment, of course, new equipment, go in and new equipment. But they will charge us quite, quite a bit.
And we were talking about that new equipment update, uh, to update every equipment now because we got old equipment, computers.
Yeah, that's, that's one other thing that I should've mentioned when we first started because one of the things that I think that we'll do when, when we do get an IT department is start analyzing equipment and doing a type of rotation so that our equipment will get rotated and the older equipment will get replaced and, you know, so that we won't have equipment that's, you know, fifteen years old like we have some computers that.
Some of the stuff that I've got in my office is there. When I took over and, by that, I took over, so it's not.
Yeah, it really depends on what it is. Computer equipment, you know, you do have to rotate. Uh, other things just really depends on, on what their use is.
It was newer stuff.
The older copy machine worked better than the newer copy machine.
We wouldn't have the maintenance, but we'd have the cost of the new stuff, so.
Exactly.
You're fighting to get away.
I think that's something that probably when, when and if we get the IT department at, that'll probably be one of the first things is to evaluate all the, evaluate all the equipment and.
Oh, we're gonna budget a department by department or that's a whole big budget for everybody?
Probably have to do department by department.
So we're gonna budget that for who's the employee?
Well, some people have already budgeted some replacement items. Uh, it really depends on the department. Like, I can see, um, Eva's office and Brian's office as having some, some items they're gonna need to budget. I do know in Annie's office, and she's not, has given me any budget numbers because she's been out. But I know in her office, some of her computers are dinosaurs. And right now, we're transferring information from one of her computers to one of our computers so that we can print things out because her computer is too old to even digest it, so. Are we supposed to be doing that?
Well, Kathy, they have a new computer that they're using now. Now, there's one here of Annie's that's, you know, that's, we have maybe.
So. So then we have the county attorney, I wanna over here. Um, she's got quite a good thing, document to do. She's asking for the creation of an assistant attorney for civil, and I'm sorry, I don't know what.
What is civil?
Civil transactional.
With the increase in just the volume of contracts and, um, I, we've got the increased criminal work as well. So whoever it would be, I would want to label it a civil transactional so that most attorneys here prosecutors obviously may think that they're a prosecutor. Um, but with the development, there's a lot of changes that we're trying to make with the development committee, with ordinances, with the contracts for different things throughout the county. Um, it's just the volume of work in the office that, it's increased. The number of attorneys in the office, I mean, when Howard Burge was the county attorney, he had an assistant. So the number of attorneys in the office hasn't increased since the eighties. But the work here in the county is, is increasing rather rapidly. And I think the county attorney's office is one of the few offices that hasn't added any personnel in the last twenty-three years. Um, so there, there is quite an increase in volume. I've made it an effort to get responses to each of you as quickly as possible to review contracts and get those out as quickly as we can. Um, with just the two of us, Carly spends most of her time doing nothing but reviewing criminal cases. Um, and I spend my time trying to answer each department-hand elected official's questions and handle all of the, the civil work that's coming through, so. It would be very helpful in our office.
And that, that creation of a victim assistant?
That is actually a legislatively required position and, um, there has not been one in the office to my knowledge. Right now, I have Kristi Gonzalez designated as the crime victims' advocate, but there are a lot of statutory required responsibilities for a prosecutor's office in regards to victims and how they're supposed to be dealt with.
And that's all they would do?
Probably would also help the secretarial guys. Especially if, if y'all weren't to grant me another attorney, there would, there would be additional secretarial duties for that person to, to do with.
Now, how many employees do you have?
I have, um, three right now.
I think.
I eliminated the hot check position because it just wasn't financially feasible to continue to have a separate hot check department. So that position has been absorbed into the Altus as part of the secretarial responsibilities. So my secretaries are now doing secretarial work in addition to, um, they are working on checks.
So you now have two clerical and yourself and another attorney?
Yes.
And I believe we check other counties around. I think that they, they may not call it a, a, uh, civil, civil, but they, I wonder if they, they have three to four assistant attorneys working in the offices.
Any, another attorney would have to kind of be a, I'm looking for an attorney that can do everything. Like, I do everything. I do the criminal and the civil. So a lot of times what that would be posted at as would be a civil transactional attorney with some criminal duties, so. And with that, of course, would come increased computer costs and increased conference costs. I think we're already well over, um, most of the computers in my office aren't the twenty-seven, eighteen years old, except for mine. Mine's the only computer in, in my office that doesn't need to be replaced, it's only about three.
Then you have to be here twenty years for retirement.
Well, and, and JR has told me he's, he's added memory to, to my computers and things like that. And he's like, "There's nothing else I can do to get him to work."
So, I don't know, something to think about there. And then of course, the treasurer has requested a few things. Uh, actually, she has Melanie, which Gavin has right now as part-time, and she'd like to put her as a full-time employee. She apparently has turned out to be a valuable employee and she'd like to help her out. Um, and then she's requested raises for both Sylvia and, um, Ms. Mills, who is now the HR person. We call her HR personnel. And then some minor things, conferences and dues and office supplies, which, I'm sorry, office supplies. Whenever you buy a toner, it usually takes up most of your office supply budget. But it's just ridiculous how much those things cost. Especially the maker that prints the checks, those are very expensive.
Absolutely. If, you know, it don't hit us just like it does at home, everything you go buy now is gonna, it's gonna be a tough deal to budget because.
Yeah, how much does she make? I mean, should I see what she makes? What would she make as full-time employee?
The starting out salary, between one thousand, twenty-one thousand. Plus insurance and all of that.
I think it's already about retirement. Just be the insurance, she's on everything else.
Because with insurance and retirement, wherever you push somebody from, you know, if they don't have retirement, you know, your social security is six point, I'm sorry, seven point six five and your retirement is eight point nine. So you're looking at about sixteen and a half percent to go on top of any salary. And then insurance, which is about seven, seven thirty a month right now, but you can be assured that's going to go up. By at least fifteen percent is what I heard today, so.
That's another discussion.
Yeah. Then we have CJC and the sheriff's office, both of them, I think they're on separate pages, but basically he's asking for an increase in wages for his employees. Um, five hundred dollars a month across the board for all of his employees, which of course then increase retirement and social security. And then the sheriff is on the next page, sheriff department and CJC are separated, but the sheriff's department is also asking for some increase in forensic science expenses and vehicle maintenance and office supplies and uniforms. So it's kind of split up on your spreadsheet, but I can feel it. So.
Well, the reason why I'm asking for the increase in salaries is all the surrounding counties and most of the PDs and the surrounding counties are all paying at least, starting to pay is at least six to eight thousand, um, a year more. I know I, you know, gave you the five positions last year. I had a hard time telling them, I'll be honest with you, because people have come and said, "You want me to work for that?" And, um, so I've got some young officers that have been talking about and looking for other jobs because of salaries. And I've been begging to stay on, hopefully that we can do something this year. And it's on my long-term officers, they have never ever gotten anything other than a three or five percent. So they need to be raised also. I mean, because they do a good job. They, they're conscientious and, and they do a good job for us. And the forensic science, uh.
You're already overbudding on that.
Well, I mean, everything that, that we take to the DA's office now, every case, if it has anything to do with any kind of evidence, I think it has to be sent to the lab. Every little bit of marijuana or meth or coke or whatever, they want it to be sent to the lab, so.
Something else, say, is popery.
Yeah.
Are you gonna smoke popery?
Sheriff, the increase in uniforms, is that overall department, is that per in, per employee? No, that's just for the sheriff department. Ignored it last year and I don't know why ignored it. It was ignored, but, uh, you take, say, thirty employees and, uh, make it to twenty-five hundred dollars. But that's for the whole department, that's not. That doesn't even buy them anything.
That's not per in, per in?
No, that's for the whole, whole department. Because their uniforms, if you were to buy each one of them like we say we would, four uniforms a year, you know, that would be, uh, approximately four hundred dollars. Now, most counties, you know, they give clothing allowances also, but, uh, which we don't give clothing allowance, so, you know, we try to at least keep them in as nice a uniforms as we can. Now, some don't ask, they'll just work for however long, you know, but, uh, they take, they'll take good care of them clothes.
You also, you're having, very, you have a projected salary, you know, current salaries are. I, I think, uh, you can ask, ask for some projections, three, four, five percent projection or eight. So Jan gave us that to include in your packages so you can basically see what the salaries are currently. Of course, that'll be five hundred dollars a month, six thousand a year rate for each individual. How many employees do you have across that range? Sixty, seventy?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
I mean, seventy-two or three, somewhere around there. And you know, I mean, our, our dispatch in our jail is just a constant term. And we've had so many people come in and say, you know, "I can't work for that." And then, you know, dispatch is, is something that's, that's got to work. You know, you have to have these people certified with it six months. Once you get them certified, you spend a bunch of money on them, they're gone. So I think if we pay these people a little more, I think we'll be able to retain these people.
So, I, yeah, I don't have a calculator, but she calculated, about four hundred thousand are an increase in salary. We're, we're just showing, four hundred thirty-eight. You're estimating about seventy-three hundred.
And you have a seven point six five additional.
Yes.
Social security.
Social security and the increase in the retirement, which is eight point nine, so those two add together is like sixteen percent. So overall, yeah, you're easily looking at five hundred.
Yeah.
Seven hundred and seventy.
How much, what percent?
Sixteen point five. So, and then, I'm guessing, you know, with this meeting, we're gonna kind of go through all these and, and all of the round and then really put some money.
Do they, do they have to put the different scenarios and then see what our?
I think we would be here till midnight.
We just, we just bait it to get them.
And Albert already said he's not taking them.
Yeah, so we, no more, before we can start.
So after that, we have Constable Precinct One. He, I believe, is the only constable that gave us any budget requests. And he would like to have an increase in his expense account. Currently, the expense account is at ninety-six hundred dollars for each of the constables and they have the option to spend that however they feel they want to as long as it's just a viable expense that they want to buy, you know, equipment or uniforms or lights for cars and things like that. So he would like a four hundred dollar increase from down there to the flight at ten thousand dollars. And I would think that if you did one, we'd have to do all four of them to be equitable. Uh, the other thing he's asking for is a clerk for twenty hours a week, uh, part-time clerk. He didn't give me, well, he said minimum wage, so minimum wage at this point is seven point two five percent. I'm sorry, seven point five.
I don't understand the idea of having to hire a clerk for all four of them. Be three of them more than anyone.
Well, can I kind of ask on, on the constables, I mean, what type of paperwork would he need to have done? And if he's serving for a JP or for the sheriff's office, could not have been questioned?
Serving for the sheriff's department, Donny does the paperwork.
Yeah.
But if they go straight to. But if they go straight to him, like if this precinct or whatever, he's got, he logged. I know right now Martin logs his own stuff in. He's got a docket book that he uses. And that's probably what he's, whoever else brings him. But when we go through, he does serve lots of papers for me, writs and things like that. But we take them to Dottie, and Dottie, and that may be what he's trying to cut out is instead of going through Dottie, he goes back to his clerk. I forgot what the precinct four constable looks like.
Well, the issue with the constable is that mostly, I only see one and maybe two constables really working, but one is really working out there. But the deal is that he's working all around the county.
And, and I see him all over the place. I agree.
And I think, I don't know, man, it's.
I know you have the sheriff a lot. Well, I do have, I personally have a problem. I don't have a problem with, with any of the requests that he has here, quite frankly. But I do have a problem if we do that, and we have to roll that out to all four constables. When, in my opinion, there's a lack, of course, I'd say the same thing about maybe the Commissioner of Precinct Four, but there's a lack of performance.
I think that you can consider each and every department individually, just like, I mean, they are each elected.
They each have a, have an office, and so I don't think that you have to consider them collectively or anything.
I think that they each have a separate elected office individually.
Right.
You can budget that office individually, so.
Can you guys round?
If I could address that, I agree with Commissioner Wiley that if, you know, just each department is separate, and if you're giving four hundred dollars to one department for that particular thing because they asked it, I agree that that doesn't necessarily mean you have to do that for each department. I think that it, it opens us up for abuse or waste or whatever. But I agree that if, if it's not asked for, if it's not really needed, then we don't need to spread it, you know, to make the peanut butter level across the whole piece of bread. You know, if, if it's only gonna be used on half that piece of bread, then only put it on half piece of bread. So, I mean, I agree with that. Even right now, the JPs have different salaries. Burdette and I make three thousand.